I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do you need to read this?
Hi, honey. Grab a chair. All righty. Let's move right on to 2.0, which is the Agenda Perimeter. Do they need anything added or removed? We need to add... What were we discussing last time?
The agenda.
Oh, it is. Okay. Okay. The motion.
We accept the agenda as stated.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the agenda as stated. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Then we're going to go on to 3.0, visitors to address the board, and this is time for public comment on non-agenda items. Do we have any questions?
No requests this evening.
All right. Okay, and then we're going to go on to 4.0, the consent agenda.
I'm too great.
Then we've been seconded to accept the consent agenda as stated. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Now we go on to 5.0, new business. And the first one's 5.1.
Aye.
Response to intervention, RTI update, the teaching, and what they need. One of the languages.
Beijing.
Beijing. The triple I.
As our teaching and learning department has been hearing, we've had a lot of work with colleagues visiting. One of the things that we try to do in all classes is get the brain smart stuff. And so we have a conscious physical expert here who's going to lead us all in a brain smart start to bring work back to working.
Learning.
All right. Okay. Am I okay with staying?
Yes.
Okay. You go.
You got it.
All right. A brain smart start has four parts. So we need to do the four parts. Purpose of brain smart start is to disengage stress and prepare your brain for learning. So first thing that we're going to do is something to unite the room. And you already did something that unites the room. Let me ask what that is. Political regents. And yes, you did actually unite the room. But we'll also say the tagline for St. Helens, learn, connect, commit. Let's say that together.
Learn, connect, commit.
Good. Okay. Speaking of commitment. They're talking about getting your brain ready for learning, making a commitment to yourself before you start doing some type of learning. Teaching responsibility. Can we all have a good sense of responsibility or bring us this right here? But it also promotes attention. It helps your free from a low. That's where you're thinking. You're living here. I can feel that following that free from a low. So I want you to think about when you're in a meeting, the types of things that you need to do when you're in a meeting. So attend to what's being said. Another thing I was thinking about, we need to be, you know, we know what your diverse opinions, those kinds of things that happen in a meeting. So in your head, oh, you've gotten some free in the room. It's exciting. So that's lovely. You can pick one of those to be your commitment today if you would like. Or just something you're, you know, like, I, you know, maybe you tend to daydream. I'm going to make sure I'm looking at the speaker so I'm really paying attention to what they're saying. And it's nice that you guys are sitting like this so it's easier to see the speaker instead of the back there. Why that you often have to do this? So pick one of those things. A commitment in this case is just a promise you make to yourself. You don't have to share it. Just be mindful of it at the end of the meeting. I'm not going to cue you, but you remember to think that, hey, how do I do with my commitment? Okay. Maybe just give you a minute to think of your commitment. Down on the post-it note. Down in your head. Go back to it. Okay. Everybody go to their head. Okay. Next, we're going to do connect. And this is for kind of very social creatures, human beings. So to make a connection with others that we work with. Makes everything more useful. So today, you're going to be a partner. And you're going to do something. Yeah, first the commitment. So we're going to play something, and it'll be quick, called slap trivia. Although that would interest you. So. So then I'm going to give you a category. I want you to use this same term. So our category could be colors. Red.
Blue.
Green.
Yellow.
Purple.
Chipotle.
Dog.
Brown.
White.
Red. Didn't they write that right?
But what does that do? We were facing each other. We were eye to eye. There was touch. And there was a sense of playfulness. That makes a connection and it helps disengage stress. So I'm going to give you your partner. Did you notice how our hands were? Were ones up and ones down? And I put mine back. My back was standing like that. So people, you should stand up. Because I just read that standing up releases 10 to 15% more oxygen in your brain. You are crossing the mid-range, so that's good. Okay, you got your hands ready?
No. We're confused.
Okay. First category. Cities or towns in the state of Oregon.
No.
Cities or towns in the state of Oregon.
So it's just doing this and back.
Classical.
Okay. One more category.
Don't take your hands off my head.
He's done our job, okay? Now we're going to do some science.
Oh, no. I'm outnumbered.
But don't worry. It's animals. And the one thing that we're going to say, you're going back and forth, but if one person pauses more than three seconds, the game's over.
Animals.
So we're going to speed it up. Ready, go. Animals.
What are we supposed to be saying? Animal. Just animal. Chihuahua. Cat.
Deer.
Pig.
Snake.
Frog.
Spider. Whale.
Fish. Sam's.
Kangaroo.
A bird. The crow.
Evil.
Chicken.
Rabbit. Fuck that. A doggy cat.
Whatever that thing's called.
Somebody. So you were face to face. You had eye contact. There was touch. And there was a playful attitude. So that helps create connection. The last thing we're going to do is disengage stress before you move on to the RTI presentation. And we're going to, and I must say, this seems to be the advanced class. You guys are pretty long on that animal. We're going to do what is called the star breath. And star, S-T-A-R, stands for smile. Take a breath. And we're relaxed. So it looks like. So let's all, when you smile, that really is chemical in your brain. It gives you a sense of welcome. So that is why you have the smile. Because in terms of their smile. It adds to the good chemicals that happen. So let's go ahead and do three of those together. Ready? All right. Such good sports. But the kids respond to this really fairly well. And they're really getting used to, I'd say that reading especially, it's reading's a lot. And it really does, I mean, some kids, they use the star breath. They make up their own way. It really does help disengage stress for the kids. So consider when you're driving, if you're a huge driver. You have to tell yourself, oh, I'm going to smile, take a breath. And once I started adding that to my driving, I would be from last time here. It's totally changed my life.
When you're doing the driving, the first time.
That's too many years.
Well, thanks for having us. We are super excited. Our team has grown a little bit. And my time in the district has grown a little bit. So that's been really fun for me to be back and having my toes in it still. So we wanted to spend some time going over what RTI is and how we are using RTI in the district already, and what our plans are for the future, and how it connects to our strategic plan. And Brooke Lontay is on the board, one of the instructional coaches. And we have Mark Heeman is part of T.I. teaching and learning this year. And then we just added Kirsten Humpert. And she is going to be the ELL instructional coach of the district. So she'll be coming on for us. And we have Issa Foley, who is the RTI coordinator at the middle school. And she directly won't be doing things whole district, but just watched the presentation she gave today. So I already, I'm sure it's like a need to get her in and working with us too. So it's exciting to have a team that we are able to provide some professional development to support our staff and students at school. We're going to get started. I have to pass around some things for you to look at while we present. I'll just pass them around. Take one. We're just going to jump right in here. So here's our second question. How is the RTI work going to impact instruction and student achievement? And why are we implementing RTI? And how will this help all students moving forward? With that, we always like to invent some avenues strategy. So we have some highlighted colors there. You all serve with us. So I'll be the white. And then you can jump in and read the yellow as well as the orange. So response to intervention, RTI's approach that schools need to help all students, including struggling learners. How do they respond when not all students are learning at grade level? How do students respond? Okay, we're going to do that again. Colors. So what is the purpose of RTI? Response to intervention or RTI is an educational strategy used in schools to provide effective and
high-quality instruction. Monitor all students' progress.
And make sure they are progressing as expected and
provide additional support.
Intervention to students who are struggling. So RTI is a shift in fundamental purpose. So we have been focused mostly on teaching throughout the years. And this fundamental shift takes us to a focus on learning, RTI bits. And then from an emphasis on what was taught to a focus on what students learn. From coverage of content to demonstrating proficiency. And from providing individual teachers with curriculum documents, such as state standards and curriculum guides, to this, which is very important. This is a big shift, to engaging collaborative teams, which is our PLTs, in buildings, having a shared knowledge regarding essential curriculum. So the RTI mission is to ensure all students learn at grade level or higher. Will you say that with me? The RTI mission is
to ensure all students learn at grade level or higher.
And that's a big shift, right? We think about all kids and their learning needs. How do we make sure that all kids are learning with it? This RTI model will help us do that. So in front of you, you have a St. Helens PLC implementation guide. So I want to do a little vocabulary type of view. PLC is professional learning communities, which are whole buildings. Or in our case here, it's our whole district as a professional learning community. And PLT is a professional learning team. So all the third grade teachers at McBride would be in a PLT. All kindergarten teachers at Columbia City would be a PLT. All the science teachers at the middle school would be a PLT. Or a grade level team at middle school or high school. They might be, have different content areas, but they have similar student, or share students. They could also be a PLC or a professional learning group as well. So we took the RTI model and we shifted to make a plan for St. Helens. And we're really excited about where we're landing already. We had some, a little dabbling in it last year and giving some momentum by going to some trainings. But you can already see, once we made the commitment to this RTI model, you can see how we're already working in, you know, all across years one, two, and three. We have a long ways to go, but we're excited about the progress already. We have over 55 people that were trained last year with the RTI at a parts of a conference. And they're excited. And like I said, I was over to the middle school today. Excellent presentation there by the staff and to their colleagues. And it was exciting to see. And it was the follow-up of the RTI presenter that we brought in for the middle school and high school pre-service, who was excellent, Brian Greeney. And just that momentum, it feels really good. So we have this five-year implementation plan. We're really focusing on years one, two, and three right now because that's where we're at. So how does RTI better fit all students? You'll read the highlighted places with it. RTI aims to identify kids who are struggling in school. It uses targeted teaching to help them catch up. An important part of RTI is measuring progress and providing more support to kids who need it. So St. Helens and RTI. Our system is changing from a waiting to fail system to a more proactive system that provides restrictive interventions the students in a more timely manner. So tier one, we have set up, a lot of times you see the regular triangle. And I handed out to you kind of an inverted triangle. And this is not ours, one of our schools, but this is an example of an inverted triangle. The top is tier one, that is all kids. And when we say all kids, we mean all kids who have the potential to live a productive life and a working life. So that gives us, you know, a huge number of our students in that tier one, we're thinking about all students. And then tier two is that targeted group. So we, after we have our PLTs working together and they collect data and assess students, there will be some targeted needs for students. And those will get targeted. The teachers will target those students to give interventions. And so that'll be a few students, right? So we've got all students who we want to reach grade level. And then when they do an assessment, there might be some students who aren't quite making it. So they will have some targeted intervention. And then tier three is come to the specific individuals. Something's going on. So what does this individual need? And we'll provide that for them. Right? Yeah? Yeah, I can. So what are the tiers? We just talked about this. So we've got three tiers. Now, tier one, access to essential grade level standards for all students. All. Everybody in the building. And essentially, I mean, there are many Oregon state standards. So when we're talking about standards, there's no way that teachers could teach all of them or in the way that the RTI model is asking. So they, teams are coming up and they worked on this last year and are providing them right now. What are the essential skills and essential standards that they want to make sure that they go through the PLT process with their students? So that's how we can make sure that we reach all students with these essential standards. So that first level is prevention for all students. The second tier is additional time and support to learn essential behavior and academic standards. And that's an intervention for some students. And then we have intensive remediation and universal skills. And that's tier three. And that's intense remediation. And this is Issa Foley at Bell. So this is her vigil that she gave today. And I just want to give her credit because I felt like this is such a good vigil for you to see the different tiers, prevention, intervention, and then intense remediation.
So it just, that pendulum of all of this, and also there's a student that needs your extension is going to be another thing that's like, there's not. So this looks like, okay, where I'm going to be that failure. If there's a kid struggling, I'm going to help him. I'm going to help him a little more. Does it work? Because I don't even know it.
Yes, absolutely. Enrichment, absolutely. And that will happen here. If a student already knows the content in their PLTs, they will document that. And then either they will go deeper into a content standard or they'll go to a next to no standard to instruct with that. So yes, thank you for bringing that up. So I'm going to have you watch this. Yeah, can I do that? This is Mike Maddos from Solution Tree. It's just a, that format, just a very good overview of the triangle that you have in front of you, an inverted triangle.
Take a look at your blank pyramid. You notice this pyramid is upside down. It's inverted. If it came to my second breakout on day one, I talked about this. The reason why you see the pyramid upside down is because in so many schools and districts, we've seen them, when they look at a traditional pyramid, right side up, they view RTI, a system of tiered support, as just a new way to qualify kids for special ed. And usually above tier three, they put a line. And it says special ed up on top. And the whole pyramid seems pointed to special ed. And all the tiers below become just the screening process or the hoops you have to jump through before you can get kids into traditional special ed testing. And that makes your system of interventions just turn into a paperwork process, a screening process, where teachers spend more time filling out forms than helping kids. And we wanted to change that thinking because we're not doing tiered support just as a way to screen kids prior to traditional special ed. We're doing tiered support to be proactive, to give every child the support they need. So hopefully, we're catching problems early and often so we don't have big discrepancies later where kids need to go into special ed to get the extra help. So to change the thinking, we inverted the pyramid. And we said, you know what? Really, a system of interventions is about focusing on the individual needs of kids. And you still have tiers. The top of the pyramid now is tier one, what all kids get. Tier two is supplemental or a little extra help. And tier three is intensive or a lot of help. But as you go through the tiers, you're not thinking, are we close to the special ed? We're going from what all kids need at your school to learn in high levels, tier one, to what these kids need for a little extra help to learn at high levels, to by tier three, you're down to what this kid needs to succeed in our school. So that's why you see the pyramid upside down. That's the thinking. You also see the pyramid as split. There's kind of a green top right-hand corner. Then there's this red, you know, weird shaped area. This is the thinking. The green area represents the responsibilities in tier one and tier two that your PLC collaborative teacher team should take the lead on. Let me say that again. That top green corner is where your PLC teacher teams take the lead. So at an elementary school, this is where your kindergarten team takes the lead. Your first grade team takes the lead. Second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth. Middle schools, high schools, this is where your Algebra I team takes the lead. This is where your World History team takes the lead. This is where the Biology team takes the lead. This is where your Fine Arts team takes the lead. How you form your teacher teams in this PLC process, they're going to take the lead. And whatever you put in those two boxes, tier one, tier two, within that green box. The red side represents your school-wide support system. What do I mean by that? Every school has resources that aren't owned by one grade level. They're not owned by one department. They need to be coordinated to best be used across the school. Like what? Like your special ed support staff. Like your school psychologist. Your school counselor. Your speech and language pathologist. Your administration. Your instructional aides. Your classified staff. Those are all resources that, you know, because one grade level or one department doesn't own them, it's going to take some school-wide effort to coordinate how they should be used. So I will propose to you that that's, that that red area should be led by a school leadership team, a guiding coalition. And as Rick said, leadership team doesn't mean admin alone because we know leadership is widely dispersed. This is teacher leaders and administration working together to best coordinate your school-wide resources. Because we have limited resources, we want to use them as effectively as possible. And I'll spell more of this out as we move along. But I want to give you the bigger picture.
On to the next slide here.
Take a look at your blank pyramid. You notice this pyramid is up.
There it is. Okay, there it is. So we're going to go ahead and take a look at the example that we're providing. This is not one of our schools, but we wanted to provide you an example of what the pyramid looks like. We're currently in the process in all of our buildings of developing this with our tiered system of supports. We were very excited because we've got really strong with our guiding coalition currently. We've been offering strong guidance within elementary. Clement Middle School was on hold, so was high school. So as he mentioned, the left side of the pyramid is the responsibility of the school-wide team, which is the guiding coalition. The right is the teacher teams. And he did a great job of explaining that the upside down with the RTI approach intervention process is assuming that all, every student is learning at high levels. So that includes enrichment as well as intervention. This is our roadmap on how we respond to student need. So here's where we are currently. So we have our umbrella, RTI. We have PLCs, avid quality assessment practices, conscious discipline. They all fall under the umbrella of the RTI process. So we've implemented building schedules with collaborative planning kinds. The schedule add structure for teaching essential skills and implementing targeted interventions as well as enrichments. And I love that you asked that question. It's like a really powerful. Across all. It's like a really powerful, across all grade levels. And then continues, we continue to learn from learning that students have already done or started. So they're really monitoring students' need and we're adjusting to that need. All right. I believe I want to elevate Isa's work. I believe the Isa goes by they and them. And I believe that I misspoke and referred to her as her. So I want to make sure and elevate her and honor her in that way. Yes, um, yeah. That they are fabulous, they do great work, and I absolutely want to elevate them. So our strategic plan, this is where, if you'll see there, we, I copied off the sheet there for where we are in our performance indicators and our measures and has my name on there for student success. And so I'm excited about this work, getting able to leave this in the finals. So the indicator is identifying and evaluating tools and practices currently supporting the district's multi-tiered system of support. And so the mind goal, as we are working with all schools, is while investing the list of tools and practices at our schools, and that's by the end of January. We've already started this list. All the buildings are working on, giving me those lists of the tools. Some of the tools you can see on our five-year plan are not intervention-specific, but the things that we're using right now are our essential skills and our PLT psychomodes. And those kinds of things that draw teams to understand which interventions they should be doing. And we'll have training with those tools. Performance Indicator 1B is creating a cohesive and consistent structure for our district's multi-tiered system. So we have to create a multi-tiered system of support document and identifies our tiered levels of support. You can see that right on our strategic plan. So right now, in yellow, this is what is happening right now on the map. Each school is working on a pyramid of response intervention, creating a document district-wide for interventions that are available for students. Have prepaid the 12. And then we'll, we'll continue to add as we move RTI forward and need our climate of needs and guiding coalition. And our guiding coalitions are really up and running in all of our buildings. And that's been a very exciting movement this summer. And with our new elementary principals, we were able to have an elementary principal retreat and we invited the TOSs and our teaching and learning team to come to that. It was, it was very enthusiastically received, just to be together and talk about this and start that, move that forward. And the three principals at elementary level are really excited about moving this work with their guiding coalition. Performance Indicator 1C is to then identify resources that support our essential standard skills. And teacher teams will select a course or subject and identify essential standards and skills playing under the school year. That, that work is already quite a mix moving forward. So I'm hopeful that we'll have this by winter break. I think we're way ahead just because of the work we've done this way. So elementary teacher teams have come together by their, by their grade level essential standard. I think we didn't add in here, but the middle and high school have their lineup plans that they're working on. And Chris is talking about that at the middle school. Katie's already got a developed plan for her high school. Continuing to work on our curriculum maps, prepaid flow, authority resources, we, we like the essential standards chart. So we have, we have curriculum in, in ELA and MAP. And so this is looking now in the next three years to get to the place where we're at year three on our plan where these pacing guides is already there, the teachers are working and they'll be taking this year and next year to really get into the curriculum and learning it, to a place where they can really implement that. So here's where you guys can land. We are going in November to RTI Institute. It's the 13th, 14th, the 13th will fly out on the 12th. It's to the great metropolis of Sacramento, somewhere where y'all want to go. But we really believe that our leadership all needs to be, it's go to an RTI institute and get trained in this way. Scott's going to attend and we would really like to have one of you attend. And so you'll let Scott know if you're interested and then he can make a choice with you. Make it out of a hat, something like that. But we would love to have one of you attend with us in November. Any questions or anything else you'd like to know that we haven't yet told you?
That's a very simple question. So some of the activities that were happening in resource firms or special ed classrooms, are they now then throughout the school?
I would, I would hope that that would gain momentum through, through this work. I think, you know, as students reveal their need, then teachers, I'm, I am sure will be using specialized teachers as a resource for how to get those kids that have the individual need from that tier three that we need to respond to. Like it's kind of like this exercise for winter break, this dance exercise. When I have visited the set blocks, I, that was the first thing I thought was, why are we not doing this every day and every block? Well, conscious discipline specifically, that we're trying to use that in all of our classrooms and our set programs as well. I think it's the need and we love that. That's the guidance that we're doing.
With a little of that, of the city, you said, though.
Yeah, they're doing morning meetings.
I'm not sure if Kelly just gets to your question. But the way, oftentimes, because our teachers care about their children more than most, and if they feel like they don't have the resources to support them, oftentimes they start moving towards a special ed identification. This is designed to provide the resources to train teachers so they feel like they're empowered, they've got a skill and a team behind them to work with all the kids. So we've actually narrowed down the number of teachers that need that individualized and attached by a special ed teacher. And then they're able to lead with this, up to a good degree. So over time, that's what's expected to happen.
And I think Mike has mentioned that, you know, it's been such a practice. If students aren't responding to regular education, it is that the gateway to special ed. And that's why we are appreciating this inverted triangle because we're trying to do things to get students all the way through and prevent so all kids are learning at grade level. And then there will be students that have individual needs. But we want to make sure that they have access to grade level content and grade level standard, essential standard. And there will be students who experience difficulty, who will go through special ed. However, this way, we're looking at this totally different. We're, we're working on tier one and that core instruction for all students. I think that that is. Thank you so much for having us.
This is Tyler.
Heidi.
You guys, stay out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Make that drive, girl.
Spot.
Okay.
All right, well then we will go on to 5.2, which is our 20, 23, 24 board operating agreement. I believe Scott, where do you want us to go on this?
Yeah, I think what's important is that, Chris, you have a report. I think we shall take a few moments to read through this and then maybe just go around and make comments on, like, where we want to change this board functions at a pretty high level. So I'm not sure if there's a whole lot that should be changed, but it's important to review.
Sorry, I'm running out of time for all meetings. Try the executive assistance if you're going to wait.
We've got good priority between you. And you're separate with one another. And the board acknowledges they will operate according to policies K L, with handling concerns raised by the community members. Some call it D B M, with handling concerns raised by staff.
The board acknowledges that all of the power chain of command, per policy, K L and K E. Board acknowledges that we still operate according to policies of D B C, based on those. Remember, we will respectfully ask questions in the formation of this comparative work that we should be prepared to vote to all board members.
It could be about myself, I think. The board chair, or does it mean, will we state the motion before its time for members to vote for policy D B?
Once a board decision is made, all board members agree to support this decision regardless of how they vote.
I will be allotted for discussion or additional questions the board may have in order for them to make an informed decision regarding future motions. Any further information needed will be provided to all board members by this super plan. Prior to a vote, the board chair will confirm that all questions have been answered.
So we went back around, the last time we went through 1920, we go to the gap. Did you guys know what happened during that gap?
1920?
Well, 29.
Okay. Okay, there.
1920.
Hundred years ago, four years ago.
What the heck, right?
It's, I mean, 1920, 2012, 2020, and I said, 1920, yeah.
School year.
Cool.
I was thinking the same thing.
All right, so there was, there was little kind of between there.
Yeah.
But you guys understand, we don't, our board should take more. But I think they're pretty good. Is there any comments or thoughts or adjustments that we're all, it's all pretty good, like?
I think there's a couple, consistently with, yeah, either upper case P or lowercase. Nate becomes Nate and maybe a spacing weapon in there. The speaker. Yes. Do you want to add any more?
I said, okay, you can use it. You got it all.
So at this point, are we all discussing the way we created the worded and what's there? Or any parts of it as far as how to follow through with that? So, so I, on number three, communicating respectfully with one another, which I, I don't think we have an issue on that, that's personally is the best. But I do know that there's been different opinions about discussions at the same time with community members when they are here or asking us questions and asking us to be. Some of us, as board members, talk with no problem back to them. Other ones feel that we should just turn it over to you. And so I just wanted to, maybe we all talk about where, you know, we want to be on that one. Because, because one person can totally make, even one board chairman or anything, can make that be totally different and not follow what the other rest of the board's on going. Why did you do that, you know, that category? So I, I believe that we might have different opinions on that one.
That would probably go back to, like, so in proper chain of command. So just because they're here doesn't mean that the proper chain of command has been followed. So that's when we cannot do our engaging conversation and answer questions or ask someone to answer the question because we have, let's refer them to a chain of command and not have a discussion where we answer incorrectly.
Also, do you think that maybe you should always have for, at least board chairman, is that total, sitting here all the time and is it? So on this topic, did, did you go talk to your teacher about it? Yeah, or not? Have we sent them? What are we saying, you are the one that needs to be there?
No, I, I think that the responsibility of the board is to gather feedback input from staff and then directly to go to the right people, not just the, the elementary principals, gather the information and then report back to the board. I think it's important that someone feel like they can give their care, grab any time set aside for, for statements or to ask questions in that space. But that time is not for us to then respond before we have a conversation back. We have a conversation amongst ourselves up here when we're doing that. But we want to encourage them to be able to speak to us and tell us their thoughts or their opinion in that space. But not, I think, in a space where we would then have that conversation about, discussion about that then. I want to receive what they have to say, I don't want necessarily to intervene.
So how can we make it so that that is always felt through though? That even us as board members know that, you know, it's something you took care of or it is taken care of and I don't have somebody three months down the road. Do you guys have a current decision about that? That's one way. And the other part is what if it is something that the board didn't decide? Then there isn't anybody to send them necessarily back to.
Well, I was trying to say there's discussions with the board, not a discussion with the public. The public provides feedback and you're only elected officials to make those decisions. Because there's this need, it's not a public.
We can probably practice that when we get to the O R P, Super Inlet Report. We can probably practice, pretend that a parent is complaining about something and then we run through it.
Just feedback. That's the thing is, if, if it's a simple question that you, that you know the answer of, like, when they're doing a public comment, it's like, easy, you know, I can knock it down. One, doing your district report, and then answering the question, because there's times where it's just a simple. Like, there's times where it's like, I don't know.
Controversial.
Yeah. I believe doing public comment, it's a lot of time to engage. Engage because there's some time to know the, the, the last thirty. For you to come back with, yeah. Yeah, no, I appreciate that. And definitely the discussion with the board. I think that is what the board had about the discussion. Which was to the making decision. Uh, I will, part of it is to avoid the board getting down and to make a decision which, yes, would have been wrong. Not getting into the weeds. One of the ways that I just, this is as well, this is from the last, so it's good. Some of you had it, some of you were sitting next to me. I highlighted the three, I think, probably the most ones I like that you may want to consider. And if we're beginning to have that conversation, which is, you're very caring for it, you're very engaged, and it's really easy, you can come have a question that could start that conversation. But as a board, you need to go out and release yourself. And if you look at, it's a, it's a motion, point of order is for one piece where you kind of release yourself. So if you start having that conversation, then one of you would say point of order and then that interrupts the proceeding and process. You have to correct that and remind us, well, we're starting to move down the track. That isn't necessarily the operation. So the point of order, the amendment, how to make an amendment, modify the words of motion, and then postpone something. This is an area where we often, for board organizational office, often say we're going to table something and that's not the proper way. So I think it'd be helpful, maybe we should have this, with us, on a regular basis. So it's part of the package. So it's part of the package, that type of thing. So thank you.
Do we call point of order when it's, when someone's telling a long story?
I don't. I feel like as part of respectful communication, yes. And at times we, we can get a little sidetracked on some of those lovely anecdotes and those are spaces that we have elsewhere.
Yeah, well, there is, if you look on your motions, the one, two, circling down, limited or extended debate. So maybe motion to a limit, that, that's a good site.
So how would point of information work? So since it's a request directed to the chair for information available to the board's second meeting. Would that be a board member saying, oh, I have a request to provide information? Or is that?
Provide or receive. Sometimes you don't say that, I don't actually, but it's. Point of, point of information, I guess, is to have the request, the formal way to ask for it. At that point, we often say, Mr. Stockwell, do you have any insight on this or if there's any?
Okay, so, so just on that same one though, I think that at any given point, we all know that at least one of us has done that though, got into the conversation maybe at least once, it's done, meantime, right? And so without being rude to each other, because I don't think that that's anybody's intention. They're trying to be there or truly answer right then and get the problem over. And that person can leave tonight and it's done too. But that's what's hard rather, that a lot of times too, I think our board has done well at the same time. Because we don't just go, oh, sorry, three minutes is up, you're done. And that happens in other, other meetings definitely.
I see that as the difference between work session and work.
Unfortunately, we all know they don't very often show up for the work session they show up for the other one. Which, which we'd like to keep positive, discuss great things coming to that meeting.
I would, I would hope that everyone understands that discussion remains with the board. And if somebody gets pulled into a conversation that's really out of kindness, it's really going to affect ourselves. Yes, the, the challenge that you run into is when people are emotional. Uh, for whatever topic, uh, a debate isn't productive. Because they're running off emotion. And even though they're trying to calm things down and set, uh, it generally doesn't go well. And so that's why you want to have them, and if they're emotional and want to share their passion, to listen respectfully, take the notes. And then you provide some time to, to them. And, 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 and I think otherwise you're on the risk of getting into a, a, a back of the board that's really messy. People say they have a report. People say things that they don't necessarily intend to say. And, and this isn't just a unique situation for our board. It's a pretty standard board operating protocol.
I think too, the more that we practice these, so the first time somebody says point of order, it's going to feel a lot more. Reality is, the more you normalize the procedures, the more you get, it is part of our process. And it comes in an actual form of progress versus unlanguage feelings of it. Even if we don't believe that, if you feel that way, right? The more that we start practicing these skills, getting them as part of the essential.
But one, I think that more of the one never have a meeting like again. But it's the meetings that we had over here, uh, right when we're going back. And I still can't even remember how at that point that we had all the people who were talking. But then all of a sudden with each one of us saying our, where we stood. And I keep thinking that somebody asked us that personally. Is how, remember at the end there we were each talking about where we stood with COVID or where we were going from there or whatever. And I don't remember how we got to that point. Or being put in that spot.
Right, that's in special that the board decided to have, it's not a discussion forever. You, you have, we have listening sessions and if there's a hot topic that we know people want to have a voice on. Then you will have a separate meeting or feedback, not a hall.
So what would be a response for any of us as board chairman though, if somebody does say, I want to hear from each one of you where you stand. On, on the top there, I'm just saying.
Here's the board chair, you have the flexibility to like help decide what is correct for that night. Like I remember when I first came on the board, we had like three people talking about water around football. And there was a ton of people and there were staff members and the respectability, respectability of all of them. They all wanted to talk. At that time. He did allow, we like totally went into an open forum for a little bit. Just everybody used the, we were talking, the, the full board was fine with it.
I think the only thing I've noticed through all the years that we've all been together is that sometimes we all know that sometimes we maybe have one person that didn't agree within four or two, didn't agree with three or wherever we all stood. But sometimes I feel like it's good to hear another side or different opinions too along the way on certain topics. So if we're on a topic and they were asked questions, sometimes I do want to hear from that staff member. Or I do want to hear from, you know, even the people out on the football field, because there's too much water, the boosters or, you know, whatever it may be in reference to. So I don't know how, we don't, we don't ever allow, and I know the same, we don't ever allow at the next board meeting that we're going to put that back on as an expression. So we don't discuss it then, or we don't discuss it later. It looks like we've been.
So our responsibility as board chair, superintendent, uh, take notes. Sure, it's ours. The chat for a special. Even when people return, they read through or when they see that it's on there, they go to the hardware. There's, that's a comment on this side. That's what they make.
Point of order, I'd like to move past our board operating agreement.
I like that.
I don't know, you like that proper.
This was just discussion.
It's not really an action item, it's just a matter of communication.
So is there anything though, stuff that you want to bring up about it or a change or do anything that you think isn't working or is?
I think, I think it's really strong, as I said earlier, I, I appreciate the conversation about community info. It's important to have it tweeted into it, but it's also important to have it where it first, uh, and that's a part of that.
All right, well, then we will go on to five point three. Is to approve the application for permission to travel. St. Helens High School, Band and Color Guard to Grants Pass, October twenty twenty three. Any comments on this?
Two. So I can't remember if it gives a half, like pretty good. So we don't have this for approval yet. When I look at our, did that, for some reason I thought, look at it. Next meeting, I don't know if we make this on this meeting. So for clarification, what are we supposed to have this on the agenda for that? Okay, so Christie's saying yes.
It trips pretty soon.
It's October.
Been customary to have any consent, so I apologize for that too, because that's not behind us much.
Okay, we'll have to put it in, I thought about that. The second thing though is, uh, if, if we have forms, if we have forms with information that's, uh, they're supposed to be like taken away from their board. Uh, if there's a T V D, things are really difficult for me to say A or A. Can understand some of the reasons why that might be the case. For this one, but for, for my ability to make an informed decision. You know, under this particular part, it would be helpful if this.
Don't, you know, like the name of the.
Well, we have it, then we should be having it. Or if we can remove that and just say appropriate chaperones and chaperones, I would also be okay with that. But if we're going to do this, if with this, then they don't have a way to make decisions on that.
So Valerie Chaperone to the side.
Right.
And Commander really long, we can share with the chaperone background check. I agree with that, I think it's a, so I'm going to approach it.
Right, because to be honest, I don't necessarily, because it's a public record, I don't know that I that it makes on this list to be honest. But I do want to make sure that we're having forms filled out. So I don't mind. Actually, there could be a change of line here with checkbox. Just says chaperones will be approved, this will be approved.
Yeah.
Where the number, I'd like to have, always have a number of chaperones and there will be.
Yeah, they have the number of chaperones.
It'll be more.
Yeah. And it's just like, if they're going to be a chaperone. So this is the thirteenth and fifteenth of October, we have a meeting in the fourth of July. I'm not opposed to doing both this night. It's the only question.
Let's remove to amend the agenda.
I will second that.
Can you guys go move and second to, um, request to amend the agenda? All those in favor say aye. Any motion carries?
Let's move to add an action item seven point two, student application for travel.
Also.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to act item seven point two for approval for application for permission to travel for the St. Helens High School Band and Color Guard to Grants Pass, October twenty twenty. Any discussion? All those in favor. Wait, we haven't got to. Oh wait, yes we do, yes we do, yes we do. Okay, no way. Yes, we do, okay, okay, then all those in favor say aye. Okay, there we go. All right. I'm starting to do that, I know, we're never going to get there. All right. Okay, then we're going to move on to five point four, the superintendent's report with Mr. Scott.
Well, my, our, I think I want to share the first one. Um, I want to give you the current numbers. My sheet sheet, that's okay. Um, this is early. Uh, this is early and these are the, the numbers so far of student enrollments. Get pulled up here, so it has, we're not looking at the graphs yet. So we have last year compared to this year, the twenty two, twenty twenty two, twenty three and the twenty twenty three four. Everyone can turn over their graphs, please. Do not look at your graphs at all. That's not what it is. Just look at the board.
Smile and take a deep breath.
Smile, take a deep breath. So I just wanted to give you a, a look as far as what we're trending right now. This is before the ten day draw. I'm not a hundred percent confident in numbers, but these are the numbers that we have in our system. So you can see at McBride, we're down fifteen students. Lacy City, twelve. Lewis and Clark. We are down fifteen. Middle School, seventy four. And high school, we are up just a little bit. So when you're looking at this, like, oh my gosh, where are the students going? What, what's happening here is large senior class comes on and the smaller classes are kind of.
You see that growth in the second grade of McBride? That was a good one.
Yeah, that was good.
Yeah. Especially eighty one to ninety five.
And I wonder if those were kiddos in one grade.
Yeah, that was ninety one in the first grade.
Red Sweet Cap four.
Oh, great.
They go down to the second grade, they're down four.
Big class.
Plymouth, hundred fifteen. Hundred, Virgil Academy, we're up hundred eighty nine, we're right now at ninety. I expect that to go up. I wonder though how many of the Virgil Academy kiddos here are concurrent. I don't believe we have a lot of concurrent kids right now. We have a fair number of, uh, big stash that, that, that was about the world there. This is total A D M and here's what's interesting. So if you look at, uh, this includes Arthur Academy, all students enrolled, two thousand, one hundred and eleven. All students enrolled, this is June, this is September, two eight seven oh. But average daily membership, two seventy nine, average daily membership, two eight four five. Average daily attendance, two two eight seven, average daily attendance, two four nine five. So just by those being, uh, off, it tells me that there's some anomalies in there. Usually those are looking at numbers until after the ten day draw. And then we do a, uh, lights in their eyes, actual hand count, let's see where we're at. We'll have some kids draw, we'll have some kids, but I thought this would be interesting and important for you guys. Now, we're going to look at this and let me give you a little background on it. A little, a little, maybe, don't look at it yet.
It's tiny.
Look at me, I know, I know it's tough. So, uh, this is the, as, um, wants to look at data and see if the change in our, uh, schedules have impacted partying enough. So we took this near the end of last year. Um, there's some gaps in here, but it's the best data that we have now. We'll pull this up a couple of times to see what the trends are so we can monitor it. Also, I'll make our decision when we're up to June and two, uh, January, and start talking about potentially readjusting the times. So now, what I want you to do is take five minutes, look at your sheet now and make notes about, talk, anything that jumps out at you. But if you see something that, that seems odd or something that's neat or something that you have questions about. I may not have any answers right now, but it's helpful if we look at it without sharing the information yet, because we don't have bias. Write them down and then we'll pop it up on the board's.
Explain that color to block, there's that in, the dark exception of anything, but there are.
I, I think this is the, the Excel.
Yes, the original, I have the numbers ready for you, okay? But it's.
I, I cannot, I have, I can't really make this one.
Yes, actually, there may be one more important statement. So it's block scheduling, so this. So it's block scheduling, so this would be one day and this would be another day.
Fine, either.
Yeah.
What are your, what are your ahs, or your, if they stood out at you, questions?
For the tardies, why, if, what is the yellow we're gonna leave to? Because no word does it have of the teen hours of tardies.
The, I think.
The twenty, twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, the yellow, it it doesn't line up with the numbers.
I didn't. I don't think it was sophisticated graph where where the red color.
Okay.
I think it was, the person putting this together colored it based on how they're all.
Okay, because I also noticed that the blue orange on the absences is it was more accurate to the twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen absences. Because the green ones were all the way down there, and they were like.
I could highlight it, take it, I like stop it, go.
Are you talking about the table?
Yeah, I just.
Yeah, the table itself. That's a feature in Excel where they do a tab, and so, and this way the lower numbers would be like green and white. Red, so it's like I would calculate it as a check.
Got to provide a visualization of groups of the whole.
But.
Is twenty-one twenty-two supposed to be there, or why would it eliminate it?
I don't know.
And and that's one of the questions that I had, because I, there's such discrepancies between twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-three. A lot of people.
Some something's everywhere with the graph.
Yeah.
Because as this pointed out there, the twenty nineteen to twenty data actually is smaller than the eighteen.
And that's why the targets are the same in that year. Graphs and target numbers are the same, but, yeah, but one.
And I wonder part of that is because in twenty twenty, we start on like March.
Yeah.
Very well, very well. But the numbers wouldn't, that's a, it's important to have it in March, twenty-three months.
Then it's your spring.
Spring. So do you have some questions about that? The data as presented. The twenty-two, twenty-three appears to be better than since across the board. Tardies obviously are highest in first period, third period. The twenty eighteen, nineteen, it seems to have support. This is the number, and that would, that would create such high system numbers.
Would that include China, China, that's by mine, no, that's where you went.
Eighteen, that's the third year.
Oh, I'm sorry, I think it's eighteen.
So part of it is we may need to look at this data, make sure it's represented correctly, but what time of the day in first period started twenty twenty-one as compared to the others? Because if you notice that the the first period of the day was either one or five, and the red line is significant on the tardies between on those two hours. So either they were too early, too late, or maybe it just didn't like that, they were taking that period, I don't know. Your first periods of the day on, yeah, one and five are both first periods for high school.
And nine is the enrichment, like an extra, say like Thursday? It's so it's just showing that they're skipping that.
Okay.
Three numbers, so it's not really useful.
Interestingly, twenty-two, twenty-three, it's not very significant difference across the board for nine. Actually, twenty twenty-one for nine comparatively with all the loans.
See, I'm thinking, twenty-one, twenty-two was the year where we were in school all year. elves changed, and they moved to the block schedule. So we have two full years of block schedule with the reorder. Elf the last time, so I'm looking at twenty twenty-one, because that's the year where students would have returned to in person learning in March. So that's why I think the twenty twenty-one column might actually be, that red row might be twenty-one, twenty-two. And not only is the relationship, two twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-two, twenty-three are really interesting, because that pattern of the schedule and start time is the same. If twenty twenty-one is really. Then using the reduction in the second year of the block.
I cut down on tardy side, almost half we're gone.
The other thing that you can see, if it's really accurate, is the difference between twenty twenty-one and twenty-two, twenty-three. Somebody must have been working very hard on improving the kids. Because of the high school attendance, courtesy of the. And, and tardies also improved. So somebody was either working very hard at that, or it's just that people are starting to recover from the COVID habits.
I think twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. With the last year rolling, absolutely totally non-renewable virtual distance.
Yes, twenty-one, I would maybe alter any pattern, move it into the second year. And in twenty-one, which is new, also the teacher, interestingly, right?
My experience, I don't work, twenty-one, it's all the payback. So.
So before we were in that seventh period, they. So it's tough to get it good. Well, between the two. So maybe splitting it out, I think, is helpful, was definitely prior to COVID. Looking last year, and then being compared to this year, if you put that center piece. Because I like that linear data, maybe compare one, two, three, four, five, six, on top of five, six, seven, eight. And then compare that to one, seven, split there. Because what we're really looking at right is, what was our start time? What impacted the start plan now on tardy attendance on that first period? And throughout the day, so it's definitely to compare first. That's not what I'm looking at, but. So no, I don't know.
So I love comparisons in general, but I also would wanna do a breakout per grade level. Because we have seen quite a few juniors and seniors dropping out, and we're, so then again, on graduation rate, just where we're being successful with our RTI level. Being those, that on track.
I mean, I could see the data to support where the students that were right now are the ones.
Well, and we saw in the April, March and April of last year, when we looked at that data, we saw thirty kids leave the grade. It'd be nice to know where they went. Spend it off after first semester, and the rest are not going to make it to graduation. And why we didn't attack that in November.
Oh, you're. So, so my hope is that we dial this down. The party guard that is. If. Any other questions about? Like, did it back, what was, create that back?
If there are someone wanting to, uh, uh, use separate hours, because if we have two different schedule lines. I I shouldn't be seeing two schedule lines as the same.
Yeah, actually, two schedule lines, two rows, to show you the comparison of schedule.
There's a schedule.
And then a third one, or fourth one, with the changes to our times.
And I could be looking at this wrong, but I'm not so sure, in all honesty, though. If you want to say you've got three years worth of numbers to be looking at, because just remembering what it was like when parents got too funny. Kids back to school, and put them back in the building, when you had that parental backup. Like, what, and actually what improved the tardies and absence more than even anything we did as a school district at the time. So now it's normal, hopefully, yours, another year or two, you might need to be in there, and not so much go by that little time limit. Because I guarantee my daycare parents were real darn glad to go back to school, to lower their daycare bill, to evening it. So there was a lot of more motivation at home, get your kid to school than maybe it had been before, and even since.
I'm curious about that. Okay. Our last thing that I have is really just information. You've seen portions of this when we discussed bell time schedule. I know that every year, start of the year, whether you change the bell time, and you're always concerned with the, the dates they get through the project travel office or pickup. They'll always take weeks, or months, to get through the heat down. They, the lines will definitely go down, they will not go away. They'll ever go away, the hall or post bypasses. But I know there's also questions, because we did make a change in our schedule. And I wanted to provide this to you, so you could see the feedback that we received from. If we were getting a good deal with our bus contract, if our routes were efficient, and if our bells did, um, support. That's an absolute victory. So we didn't have a discussion for it, but just did look at if you wanna talk about, or if you had a feedback, things we talked about.
Sorry, I remember talking about this last year. I feel like we got this, where we had a presentation up there.
I just want to put it back in your hands, that there's questions out there that other than.
I think some of those questions are, where are we introducing this information? Is this your business, or doesn't necessarily? So those are conversations, everyone that is considering getting a group or something else. So, they could speak up through, or through those conversations. Isn't Howard, or is it Zal, or tardies, that's visiting? Then I have conversations, and that's all. So that would be, that would be more of a, where you didn't see it, you weren't whole about it. I'd encourage you to show up in general, for those parents that just can't make it to the things, like, of the conference, to be your president. Part of the conversation, how do we ensure that there has at least foreknowledge?
We have a ton of information right now, in general, like it's hard to deal with it. Like sixty now a day sometimes, across our district, and I don't think parents are reading it. And it's, it's kind of impossible to read it.
It's impossible, it's a choice, but it's a choice that.
When you're making family, where you don't have these other technology, it's not like we're sending it out and give it for. So. Could you make more efforts to send information home?
Yes, yes.
Well, we did have comments, but like tonight, so I'm assuming we didn't send out a parent's card message that showed our agenda, and not a passport. Whether or not we do, but that was something that, in a district business, we could break that up and kind of say, we're gonna talk about school schedules for graduation and data, so that can be listed differently, so they know what to tune into when I'm looking.
You know, my position is that if, if, too much information, let's send more. Why, I also think that I need to, for our parenting, and maybe, all of this stuff is put together. Which is a wonderful job program, but if we're close, it's something that we just. All the way to that, we have done several efforts, most forward, to make this accessible, even for years, so the facilitation of there. Or whether you want to comment virtually, and we can read those comments, and then we can have a discussion in this space. We've not seen anybody really take advantage of the opportunity.
It's overwhelming, so like if you all sat your phone right now and went to our website, and went to the high school, and tried to find Wednesday block schedule, you couldn't have it, it's not there. But you can Google it and put in all the right words, and it'll show it to you that it's on a named district website, not associated with the school. Like, so, it's just things of organization that take parents forever, and then they're overwhelmed, and then they're not gonna do it.
So, just go, go hard, maybe again, it's a, it's also our new website, the front board. Click it, videos of past meetings, agendas, present.
Our new website, the board, you can get videos of past meetings, agenda, present meeting, schedule of the future. And so many, and it's all right there with a single click, it's very slick. So. I, I, I actually, we were asking to make it more available to the public. If I basically register with the first school board, they'll see exactly what they're doing. And they can see minutes, votes, votes.
And this is good suggestions, we shout parents where. Writing out just business.
But parents where the link to the board thing, if nothing else, you can just say, hey, if you want to know what the board is doing, here's our link on the district website.
I would like for it to get off out clause. Like I want people to be able to get the information and then opt out of it if they want. Because if we want to opt in clause, I don't know, I don't know. So we can go through this education thing with the front end of our school. Especially on entry when we're doing all the conversations, are they able to get to your, your parents and those things. So like, we're going to send us a chunk of information out. I want you to feel comfortable and say, this is what I care about, this is what I don't care about. Who wants you to have it all? That's what I would like to see. Because when we say, well, I want you to opt in to this component, it's. It's a lot.
Yeah.
I use that feature a lot. But if we then provide the option to say, okay, you know, I don't know, I acknowledge. Why say, I want to continue to receive the board agenda and Wilson Clark's information and district file. I want to be able to sell that because I don't just say that I don't care about.
I just send the mandate to everybody, they can. They shouldn't have to opt in or.
They can, they can send it. One thing that we are working on with our, we have a new webpage which looks really good. Still working on it. One, one thing that I've talked with Stacy did, retooling our webmaster that our schools. But there's a lot of the pipeline that needs to be done for those webpages and we need to additions. I thought, I'm going to go to a restaurant, there's an idea that look to the webpages. I can't find a webpage where this looked good, the webpage was really sloppy. How do you do it? So if you have parents that want their school, or schools, district, they can now be able to, they can buy things that looks sloppy. That's not very good for us. I do know, remind me when I was in another school district, I would go do that. That school district's search, I did Google because it'd take quicker than on the webpage. But then, oh wow.
It took, I mean, it was like a third one now, but I did have to do them today. And I had her do that for five minutes, like, oh my gosh. Always trying to put my phone in. An average parent situation.
Feel like anything more than two clicks is not too far.
That was the one thing that.
Child, outside, yes.
I think so.
That was the one thing I had to do today too, I couldn't remember if it was twelve thirty or twelve forty five. Zooming on that. I, I have to say I felt that hours is probably the number one thing that people run on, wants to do that first. And then we'll stop and, and I kept having to go, where are we? Give me that, so I know if I was late for the bus. I feel like that needs to be right in front. Then you can go for the rest, that's not just saying you're up anymore. The other thing I was going to ask you on the parent view, for me, it would solve like, even like I was talking about, businesses don't know. That something we've got days off and they have staff ready to serve all our experts, for example, lunch, and we have no school. Childcare providers don't always know there's a day off or we're even getting out early or the hours change for the year any different than the parents did? If they're not out there. That's when if we could, I mean, you don't have to say it's parent view. But you could, it's maybe a way that gets in a total separate groups, that they could be actually be part of parent view too. So like all your child cares, your businesses who at least would like to be, or have an effect on it.
Stacy sends out that information that you need partners.
About E S D for childcare. E S D has all of the child cares on the list. I know how to get there and find it, but not everybody does, so. Yeah, she's, yeah, they do it, E S D have absolutely everybody and I just know that there's so many decisions we make affect childcare, meaning more than businesses, but still. And kind of help all of them learn to know, change their schedules, do different things because of what we're. And maybe there's another group I'm not picking up too, but it's just those two come to my mind real quickly now.
How many students are willing to pay on the package? Do we really want sixty students on a hook? Or is thirty a better number? If there's a standard. Most, most, often we use channels and like prefer, but I think in most situations, then they leave, there's just. That's maximizing pool efficiency, but also the export issue. And they actually haven't, we have our occupancy, I think it's like seventy one eighty two or the model C. The average rider should.
And we're fifty nine.
Yeah, so they're slightly higher than two percent on that.
We have neighbor in schools that start, all of their schools, they exact same time and all of their tools, they exact same time.
Or they're likely exact same.
They're like five minutes.
Yeah.
Really five minutes.
And then we have a contract by sex rate.
But in, like, in one recommendation, it says to have at least forty to fifty minutes between dismissal and not as outrageous to any other parent.
Not so current. Maybe five thousand for that.
Which means we can tell about it. I think it was seventy five when we talked about it. The nine minutes.
I'd wait on transportation now. We may have some issues at some of our buildings expressing for the next two weeks or so. Because all the pavings start on cable tomorrow by the apartments in Walmart, which is where the buses go. And in Manhattan in a couple weeks, they will be also be on Columbia Boulevard. So they're, they're going to have a little bit, but probably wagon at least definitely else to get around things.
They expect, they expect like a service interruption or change in favor for, for, I already noticed the candidates.
Then we'll run six point O, we're going to support and this is time for public comment, our agenda items.
Have a request to see.
No request to see. All right, then we're going to go on to seven point O, action items. Seven point one is a student matter considered during the executive session September thirteenth, twenty twenty three pursuant to O R S three, three, two, dot O six, one, paragraph four. It's been moved to executive, sent in to accept action item seven point one, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Motion carries. Okay, seven point two, it was added is to approve the application for permission to travel St. Helen's High School band and color card to Grants Pass, October twenty twenty three. Yes, then we've been seconded to accept, July item seven point two, any questions in this session? All those in favor say aye. Motion carries. Okay, so eight point O, upcoming meeting in clear, September twenty seven, twenty twenty three, regular boarding, six thirty P M. Anybody anything else? Said we need to motion right this year.
We are free.